All right, it's 6:30 so we're going to call the needed order and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the meeting agenda, the October financial fund balance statement, the minutes of the October 17 regular meeting, payment of monthly bills, excluding payments to April grid, and the upended substitute teacher listing. I just want to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Randy makes a motion, Michael seconds.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor carries a 7-0. Next, I need a motion to approve a amendment to April grid.
Make a motion.
Kenny makes a motion at second.
I'll say it.
Michael seconds. All those in favor carries a 6-0 with one extension, Mr. Henry. Thank you. Next, we'll go into our MSBA monthly board report.
Maybe? No, it'll be shorter. Nine days. Sounds very beautiful.
Hello everyone and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of November. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the issue of vaping among Missouri students. Governor Mike Parson has signed an executive order directing several state agencies, including the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to develop a statewide campaign to educate, warn, and deter the use of vaping devices among young people in Missouri. School districts throughout the state and nation have been grappling with the issue in recent months. Some have even joined a lawsuit against electronic cigarette companies that target young people because of the health risks associated with vaping. The state supervisor for alcohol and tobacco control in the State Department of Public Safety, Dorothy Taylor, says her agency is committed to preventing illegal sales to minors.
ATC will continue to support local coalitions to address the vaping epidemic, as well as meet with and provide training material to help law enforcement agencies understand the statutes related to vaping and tobacco, as well as alcohol. In addition, ATC agents plan to meet with school resource officers to offer assistance and resources regarding vape-related matters. We are committed to continuing all these efforts into working on education efforts aimed at retailers who sell these products.
The name of the state campaign is "Clear the Air: The Risk of Youth Vaping." MSBA and the Missouri PTA will be part of the effort to inform school board members, administrators, and parents about efforts to prevent young people from vaping. The State Board of Education has decided to accept new comments about the proposed sixth version of the Missouri School Improvement Program. IMSIP began in 1990 and is the state's school accountability system for reviewing and accrediting public school districts in Missouri. Nearly 1,500 comments were submitted on IMSIP VI during the initial comment period in August and resulted in several revisions to the standards and indicators being proposed in the new version. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven says the philosophy behind the Missouri School Improvement Program has changed over the years.
But in the early days where it was counting books and counting resources and counting seats and then it sort of progressed to maybe we should look at a little bit of the quality of that and then it progressed to people saying, you know what, if our kids are achieving, why do you care how we do our business at the local level? We're a local-controlled state, let's just look at student outputs. So that's where we ended up in fourth, and in IMSIP V where it became solely on performance. The pendulum is starting to sweep back where people are saying, it does matter how we do our business, it does matter about some of the inputs. So let's look at, and that's where we're heading in IMSIP VI that is not yet resolved.
Van Deven made her comments during a panel discussion at the recent MSBA annual conference. The new comment period for the IMSIP VI standards and indicators will run from December 16 through January 15. You can submit your comments via the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website. As you may know, state law now requires all school board members not only to receive training in their first year of service, but also one hour of refresher training for every subsequent year of board service. The training must include concepts covered in the initial training, plus the prevention of sexual abuse of children. There are two ways to comply with the new refresher requirements. A three-hour in-person session will satisfy the requirement for three years if there's no break in service. A one-hour online session will satisfy the requirement for one year. Visit the MSBA website for dates and locations for the in-person refresher training, as well as information on the online session. Filing for school board seats up for election in April opens on December 17 in most school districts in the state. MSBA will have free resources available to school board candidates posted on the MSBA website, including a candidate's guide to writing for the school board and information on the roles and responsibilities of school boards. Filing for school board seats closes on January 21. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. This will allow us to have some time at your board meeting and so long from Columbia.
Mrs. Sterling has sent six of you the information for your one-hour online training. Mrs. Parsick completed that last week.
The three-hour.
The three-hour training. But she has sent you the registration for the one-hour training. I'm not sure you've seen that. Okay, we have a few things to celebrate before we get started with the rest of our board meeting. Town and Country Supermarket, we're going to talk about them first in Kent. Can you come up, please? Town and Country, every year approaches the school district and wants to help with our Care to Learn program. We so appreciate what they do. It's really easy. We have volunteers from the district that are there and we hand out flyers as people are checking out, if they present that to the cashier. A percentage of their total sales for that day come back to the district through corporate. And we appreciate them very much. It's very easy for us to do and I think this year we were $742, I think, right in there. So, $745. So, we just appreciate what they do. They think about it. He called me, I didn't have to call him and said, hey, let's get this thing set up. So it was easy to get people to sign up and have volunteers. So we just want to thank them for what they do for the kids of our district. While they're taking this picture, I just want to talk about Care to Learn just a little bit. We're planning another pretty good-sized fundraiser this spring with Care to Learn. We're going to host a golf tournament at the golf course. I've talked to the golf course, they're going to run it for us. They're going to get people to sign up, somebody's going to cook for us. They're going to handle it. The golf course is going to take care of it. But it is amazing. So this year I have taken over the administration side of Care to Learn just because it was a lot for our counselors to try to keep up with. So just the stuff that comes through on a daily basis with needs of our kids. I see those now every day, whether it be just some groceries, whether it be shoes for a kid, whether it be clothes that fit. There's a huge need in our community. Care to Learn does not fill that complete need, but it at least helps families get through some rough times. So I would encourage you at any point, whether it be through corporate or, you know, people that you know, if somebody's looking for a program that they want to help students, Care to Learn is the program to do it, trust me. It is, it's just a quality program for our kids. So. The next group we want to celebrate is Mrs. Wolfskill and her program. I got to see the play or the musical Saturday night, Emma. They did an excellent job. Talented group of young people. So Mrs. Wolfskill's going to talk about them a little bit. I think they may have a little surprise for us.
Good evening. This is a majority of our cast from our musical we put on last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Really proud of these kids. It was based on the Jane Austen novel, Emma, but the updated version. But it's a little different because it used existing music. So if you came, if you didn't recognize at least one song, you probably don't listen to music. So we had a lot of fun and it was like, started with Chapel of Love, so we're talking some 50s, 60s all the way to Katy Perry and some Pat Benatar in there. And so, a little bit of something for everything. So it was different for us, it was a different show, but these kids put forth a lot of work to make it happen and they're going to be singing the last song for you called "Make a Match For You."
Great job. That was, that was really good. I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it tremendously, but I heard around the community just the last couple of days how much they enjoyed it. So we had good turnout, probably just a little lighter, but we have a football game going on. But we had a good turnout Thursday and Saturday.
Let's get ready to see it here. All right. One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go on into our principal and director reports and we'll start with the elementary principal, Dr. Hall.
Just wanted to thank you to Heart of the Hills. They called us earlier this week. We have our Fall Harvest Parties on Friday. They donated three cases of apples and three cases of oranges for our students to enjoy during those parties, but that was kind and that was a list of gesture. So it was very nice.
Thank you. Thanks. Middle school principal, Mrs. Nelson.
I just want to share a few of the activities our students have been involved in. We have had two ceremonies. One, our Jobs for American Graduates did their installation of officers. NJHS inducted 24 members. Student Council put on a first-quarter assembly for the Character Birds. We had Mr. Sacco took our junior high district honor band, seven students, to Lebanon. Eighth grade science, Mrs. Bucky Strong took a group of girls up to Springfield and explored some careers available in the medical field. Mrs. Deans Choir put on a spoony concert around Halloween time. And of course, we have girls and boys' basketball tournament going on tonight.
Thank you. High school principal, Dr. Nash.
Also have another celebration. There are over 70 bands in the South Central Missouri Educators District. Ava placed number five out of all of those schools by qualifying 16 students and four alternates for the district band. Ava bands beat 4A, 3A, 2A, and 1A schools that auditioned in numbers and also a handful of 5A schools. There were nine students eligible for state, three students selected for the SVU honor band, one student selected for the University of Central Missouri Honor Morale Choir. And lastly, but not least, people look out next Thursday in the Macy's Parade. We will have two students performing and that will be Son Sarah Johnson and Paige Kimmons. So our band is very active, they work very hard in the shows.
Thank you. Special services director, Mrs. Swaddish.
Our office has been very busy. This week alone, we've received six referrals for our early childhood program, four from Head Start and two from RP Schools. And these are students that are identified that we tested whether it's speech language by the gross motor skills. So we've been working very diligently to get those started so we can get those in in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Executive Administration reports, Dr. Dile.
Just real quick, I didn't spend very much time on this. You know, I show this to you every month as it comes up. You can see in line three, which is the SAT is slowly moving up each month. So it's, they said 6350, they got really, really close, 634996. So we anticipate that being 6375. Really, they think that's going to be there by January, so that's good. So as you know, I always budget low, expenditure's high. But we are currently $361,000 above budgeted revenues. So it's trending in the right direction. So we're not concerned about finances at this point. So just wanted to show you that. Several other things. So I sit on the Commissioner's Advisory Council, I'm one of the superintendents across the state. There's about 20 people on it. Some of them are superintendents, some of them are just other people within education. But at our last meeting, we heard the report, the governor in August talked about the need to raise teacher salary within the state. And, you know, we are, I think, between 45 and 50 in the nation, about lowest teacher salary. He wants to get that 25 to 30, 35, somewhere in there. So Desi has a group of people working on that task. So in order to raise, right now, the minimum teacher salary in the state of Missouri is $25,000. We're obviously above that, but they want to raise the minimum to $32,000. Obviously, that would move other teachers as well. So the projected impact, financial impact of that is somewhere in the neighborhood of $140 to $280 million. They don't have a plan on where that's going to come from at this point. That would obviously affect us. Probably won't affect us after next year as a minimum teacher salary, but it will, it means more money going to districts across the state. So, but with that requirement that you have to have that minimum teacher salary. So that, I thought that was interesting news. That's obviously a large call on the state budget, but that is the direction that the governor wants us to head. So that's good news for the school districts, for school districts across the state. Last week, we sent out some, not new, refresher entry procedures probably, to our buildings. You know, school safety is our number one priority, which we've talked about time and time again. So we are, we just send it out to parents through email, through text, put it on Facebook, made a phone call, put it on our app, every way we have to communicate with parents. When you come to the front door, when anybody comes to the front door of a building, we are going to require you to show an ID, just so we know that you have business in that building and we know who you say you are. And we know lots of people, but it doesn't matter. We're still going to request that you show, show a driver's license or a state-issued ID. We're getting some more signage for that, so hopefully people don't even have to get out of their car before they see this is the requirement. Just if you hear anything, we've had locked doors for many, many years. We're just reinforcing what our practice is. So. Talked about vaping. They've obviously, as you know, the Board of Education passed a resolution to enter into a lawsuit against Jewel. I just want to remind everybody that it is no cost to the district whatsoever. The district is out no dollars whatsoever. The attorneys are doing that on a contingent fee basis. But what are we doing as a school district currently? We have high school students that are involved in student council and trend that are actually educating our middle school students. So Mrs. Swaddish has really been working hard with those people, with those students. We were in sixth grade last week. We, they did, KY3 did a news piece on us, you may have seen that. We love to be in the news when it's a positive thing. But really trying to make an impact and educate kids, especially at a young age, about the harmful effects of vaping. We actually did some PSA announcements at KKOZ today with those students.
They did a real good job. Yeah. There was one of them that was reluctant and when he got done, Monica said when he came out, he wanted to get another one and go back in.
So we appreciate Art and Joe so much. I just called him and said, hey, I'd like to do this. And he said, sure, when can you bring them? I mean, never hesitate. We obviously appreciate our relationship with KKOZ. They're great friends to us. We're going to be approaching the paper, obviously doing some of those PSAs in the paper as well. We actually have them written up, it's really easy. So we're going to, I will be approaching Michael in the next couple of days to talk about what that can look like as well. So we just want to get that education out to our community. Let's see, we talked about board elections, April 7. Signups start December 17 and run through January 21. At 5:00, there is a break that'll actually go in the paper next week. During Christmas break, our offices will be closed a little bit during Christmas break. Give everybody some time. Our offices will be closed next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday as well. Kids do not have school next week, but our 12-month employees will work Monday and Tuesday and they will be off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So in August, we approved the purchase of cameras for buses. So we, as a district, feel like it's important to move forward. We are going to move forward and order those cameras for our district buses. And we haven't come to an agreement yet with the association. Mrs. Parsick has visited with them and I have visited with them. Mrs. Parsick, can you fill us in a little bit?
The drivers were concerned that, well, they had two or three different concerns. One was that if the district put the cameras on the buses, that made them employees, not independent contractors. Well, it just so happened, when they put that question out there, I was going to a meeting in St. Louis with a bunch of attorneys and tax people and I put that question out there to them. And us requiring the cameras be placed on the buses, even though they are independent contractors to us, if it is a requirement that we, it is no different than them having to have a CDL. It's no different than them having to have a license or insurance or anything like that. It's no different. I understand some of their problem with us putting on there, but the bottom line to me, and I'm assuming the rest of the board too, is the safety of the children. That's it, bottom line, safety. Dr. Dile told you I attended a meeting last Thursday night about sexual abuse to children in the schools in Missouri. One of the stories that they told actually happened to be a bus story. And there were two teenagers on the bus, two girls. They were in the back, was a male driver. They were, I guess, just the way it is, they were making out. And the bus driver separated them. They in turn filed harassment charges against that bus driver, sexual harassment charges. And there were no cameras on the bus, so they could not prove. It was their word against the bus drivers. Also, there was a five-year-old child just this last week that was attacked on a bus by a 12-year-old. And due to the fact that the cameras were on the buses, they were able to get the person that did it. They were able to carry forward with, not prosecution, but what, you know.
Juvenile charges.
Thank you. Juvenile charges against her. The arms on the buses, I believe that in a town like Ava, the size of Ava, if, with those cameras on there, if someone blows through there and we get a picture of their license, Dr. Dile has already talked to Sheriff DeGays, and they will ticket this person. I believe they don't want to take a couple of people being ticketed in Ava and everybody will think before they blow through those arms because they're going to be ticketed. But it all comes down to student safety. That's it. That is our priority as a board, that's our priority as a community, to protect those students. Now, one of the things that the drivers were concerned about is the cameras being messed, the DVR being messed with, the tape being messed with, or Dr. Dile or someone getting on the bus just to take those off. We can't. That was a motion that was made, it was approved, that to get on those buses, we have to have the driver's permission to do it. It's their buses. They, Dr. Dile will go on there with them there, take those DVRs only if there's a complaint, only if a parent makes a complaint, only if a student makes a complaint, or if a driver says there's a problem, can we look at this tape? We have no reason to pull those off there. There's no reason and they won't be. And then they will be viewed on the TV with the driver present to view that. So at no point will anyone mess with those tapes, do anything to those tapes. They are written over after 30 days.
I believe so. It's a hard drive.
It's a hard drive and after 30 days, they just start rerecording over them. So I am asking again that the drivers don't oppose having the cameras put on the buses. There's no cost to them. We already approved it, it's in the budget. It's, the school is going to pay for it and it's just another step to making our students safe.
So we're at least going to order the ones for district buses. If we can get an agreement with the Transportation Association, we will order all of them and get them put on as quickly as possible. Okay? Okay? All I have to say. Okay. Mr. Dile.
Really just going to follow up on some things. Couple of things we've talked about previously and one we have not. Shared our APR data last month, our science score. Our science scores won't be official till tomorrow within the business, but we've seen preliminary scores in, and they do overall look great. If you remember, there was a comparison there of our scores to the state average as far as our status. And what we anticipate when those final scores come out is that our science scores, again relative to that three-year average, are going to be markedly above what the state average is, so that's, that's a positive. Just like the rest of, we talked about this. Regardless of, hey, it's above or this one's below, that's a lot of the work our teachers do in those PDAs. We're always looking for ways to, to help our students achieve an higher level. Kind of following up on the call we sent out last week. Talked about this earlier in the year, we had done something a little bit different as far as our tutor training with our teachers this year. You know, with Deputy Reed here every day, and the training he's gone through. One, he has been inside in our buildings. He's here on a day-to-day basis when school's taking place. You know, he's able to identify areas that might be concerning, we need to address. And we've brought in outside agencies, because that's something we've done before, gone through different drills and things. Just due to logistics, basically we have to bring everybody to one location and do that. Well, the issue with that is if I'm an elementary teacher and that happens to take place in the middle school or high school, anyway, they're not in the place where they teach every day. Something we're able to do with Deputy Reed, uh, any day, we did one as an entire group for a couple hours. You have to do four hours, you know, we're required. He did a couple hours, just overview with everybody. And then he's been able on those different days to go to the high school and do specific training for high school teachers. And then the middle school, do specific training for them. Going to be able to do the same thing and finish up with the elementary teachers. But anytime we do that, we, we always have the questions that come up out of those meetings that we try to follow up on and think about. And that's partly from those conversations, partly we had another situation in our country last week. Just we're reviewing those policies we've got in place and those practices, so. And that was part of what prompted just to follow up on those procedures.
So Mr. Hauck is, chairs our safety committee, that Officer Reed is on as well. And so they go through those procedures a couple times a year, just to be sure that we are not missing something. You know, between Mr. Hauck and Officer Reed, they identify where we need those, we talked about cameras. Where do we need more cameras, and we've ordered more cameras, because we do have some blind spots. But I appreciate, you know, Mr. Hauck tries to get Sheriff's Office involved, City Police, Higher Patrol, those experts in that field to come in and talk to us about those areas. And so, and we feel like we've made some pretty good progress. We revamped our emergency preparedness plan that went out last year, and that's something he looks at every year, and we make changes to every year. So just appreciate him and, him and Deputy Reed and what they do with that group.
Something we've not talked about here, I don't believe, our vocational areas, our career technical programs, our AAG, our industrial arts, our tax classes, our business classes. There've been some changes at the state level as far as comprehensive needs assessment is what I was going to get, ultimately talking about. For years, they have had advisory committees specific to each one of those areas. They're going to be, you all get an invitation to be at some point as, as we go ahead and are planning. It's really just a comprehensive review of those programs, looking at the job market, what that's projected to be for our students and our graduates. Reviewing the programs we have in place. And really, as Dr. Nash and I have gone through that with, with those teachers, just making sure we're preparing them for the jobs that are going to be available when, when they get out there as graduates. You know, this year seniors, they have got a pretty good idea of what's out there in the next five years. When we're planning ahead for our kids who are in middle school, that, you know, there's no telling what that's going to look like. We've got ways to look at projections in the programs we currently have in place, but. Really, as we've gone through that, it's pretty daunting when we first reviewed that with the teachers and those programs. And Dr. Nash and I, just a lot of new information we're going to have to put together. But as we've kind of revved our minds about, around what that's going to look like, really an opportunity for us to get some good feedback and identify if there are things we can do to approve those programs for our students. And then the only other thing I wanted to touch on, you might have seen this, I know Springfield approved their school calendar for next year. We typically don't do that until later in the spring. But because of some pretty significant changes that the, came out of legislative for next year, I'm going to start having conversations with those committees sooner than, than what I typically do. Start date for next year is, you can now start school any earlier than the 24th of August. Which for us, for years, I'm not going to say forever, for years, we've always started on a, I believe a Thursday. You know, if we were to do that next year, you're looking at not starting until, I believe, the 27th. You know, that puts us almost two plus four weeks later than what we would typically start. So we are, we're just going to put together scenarios. I've started mapping out some possible calendars and what that might look like. And we're going to start sharing that information with the teachers. A little frustrating, I think, but really looking forward to the calendar we've got in place this year. You know, we're, I think I was pretty excited about it. You know, there, there are a lot of those things we're going to be able to keep in place, but there's some things that are just going to be different. Just with that condensed timeframe, it's just going to be different. We'll keep you posted. That's all we've got.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start our discussion and action items, and we'll start with our audit report.
So we have KPM, Jessica Stokes, who's an auditor with KPM, and is who our lead, is our lead auditor for the school district. And actually, this, she's worked on our audit here and there over the past several years, but this year, Randall Moots has been our lead auditor for several years, and Jessica has taken over those duties as Randall has changed positions within the firm. So we haven't had KPM here in a couple of years to talk about the audit. So I just felt like it was a good idea for Jessica to come in and just give you a brief overview of what the audit looks like if that's worth. So, thank you.
All right, well, I'm going to try to draw all this, usually, I don't mess this up. I am going to start with one thing, so there is one thing that's, that's different at this board meeting that I don't normally run into. So I'm going to go ahead and fix, and I'm not sure what to do with it, so it's my own holdup. I don't usually have a student representative at a meeting, I have to be really honest, so that's a first, so I don't want to leave you out. You know, I'm going to choose a little one to follow along. This is my third one this week, and you are the first student representative at a panel meeting, so. So once you have a chance to look at it, you don't have to read it all. And that actually goes for all, I know it's exciting, but we didn't read it everywhere so far.
All right, well, Dr. Hall, thank you very much for coming first off. Yeah, so my name went to, like I first thought said, is Jessica Service, I'm a shareholder at KPM. I have been specialized in governmental auditing for the past 16 years. I've been coming down to Ava, certainly when I was brand new to staff accounts since I, since I started the firm. So I've, I've been down here for a while, actually. Just a little background about our firm and myself. Like I said, we do specialize in our firm in governmental auditing. We audit north of 70 school districts in the state of Missouri. We audit everything from the smallest rural schools to some of the largest urban schools up in Kansas City and St. Louis. So there's not much that, that we haven't seen collectively. And that is one of the, the nice attributes, I think, that we do bring whenever we do come in to work with a school. We've always taken the approach that an audit, whenever we come in to conduct an audit, it's not just to come in for those few days and just do the audit. We stay, we do service as a support system for the finance departments throughout the year. We have very close connections with DESI. And again, it's with a lot of other schools in the state. So normally, if something does come up from a finance perspective, you have a resource that you can reach out to. And, and on that, I also have to brag real quick on Monica, because even though she is not here, Monica is pretty well-known throughout the state in bookkeeping circles because of how very, very good she is. I have referred more than, more than one bookkeeper to call Monica whenever they can't figure out how to make something work. So anyway, so just in case you all did not know that, Monica is, is, is kind of legendary throughout the bookkeeping circles in the state of Missouri. The one you all did know that, so. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started with the audit itself, and I promise I'm going to, it won't be real exciting, but I'm just going to try not to make it too boring either. And if anytime you have any questions, do feel free to go ahead and just ask. The packet that I provided gives you two letters that are on, that started. It says on top that are separate. The first one starts off as we have audited the financial statements. That is our governance letter, that's a required communication that, that we have, that we have to, again, communicate with those charged with governance. That is, in this case, the Board of Education. This is our opportunity to let you know if we encountered any difficulties in the audit. Did we have any problems getting any of the information we needed? Do we have a lot of misstatements? Do we, did we find any difficulties with management, do we have any significant disagreements? I'm very pleased to note that you've seen the letter that we had none of those issues. We had no material misstatements. Management was very cooperative, they always are, so thank you all for that, by the way. That makes an audit much more pleasant to be on. So I do like to go ahead and point that out, and one of the reasons I do like to point that out, and especially if for any reason you have the opportunity to serve on boards anywhere else and you have audits, you should be asking your auditors for this letter, because this is like your opportunity to find out if there was any difficulties throughout the audit. And it's also an opportunity for you to find out whether or not the auditors are seeing numbers that are different than what you're seeing. And that's what those misstatements are, are there to, to note. We did not have any, which means that the information that you're getting on a monthly basis is the same information that we're getting, which for a board should give you a lot of confidence in your finance department, in your administration. So that's why I do like to point that letter out and the significance of it. So anyway, it's very, and that's consistent, by the way, with years past at this district. Some of those are, are less, less kind, so I'm very, I've always had, we never had a good letter to report. The second letter that we do have is our management letter. A management letter is an opportunity for us as auditors to just report on anything that is, can, they, for one thing, can be immaterial, insignificant, items of non-compliance, or they could just be items that we've noted while conducting audits throughout the state that are emerging issues for school districts. This board is also very, very good about being on top of, of any emerging issues, but we do go ahead and put them in here. One is no huge surprise to probably anyone that's been in any government entity, that's cybersecurity. That's going to be the ongoing issue that every school district, every city, every county, every not-for-profit, every for-profit is, is having to address. It's a problem that's not going to go away. So really, it's just making sure that insurance is adequate. A lot of times this isn't a, unfortunately, it's not a, it's not an if, but when kind of scenario anymore. But making sure that you are minimizing any loose areas in, in your securities, our security areas. None that we noted necessarily, but every organization is having a weakness. So I do want to just, that's why we have it in there, because I get a call every week that, that one of my entities has had a breach. And it's not, something not exciting, we see any, any slowing down on. So that's why we have it in there, just for what it turns out. After that, we're going to go, go right into the report. Oh yeah, mine's pretty reports. And if you have any questions on those letters, is that pretty clear of what they are coming? So we go right into the report itself, and we start on page three. That's going to be our independent auditors' report. That is really what we're doing, I mean, that's, if you got right down to it, that's really the biggest part that we're here to deliver is, is that report. That report, because we are accountants, it takes a couple pages to get to, to say something simple, so. But, but that's, that's our confession, so. The audit report is broken out where it has management responsibility, auditors' responsibility. And the only part I want to read of that part is, just to say that what we did is we connoted our audit in accordance with Audit Standards generally accepted in the United States of America. And the standards applicable to financial audits containing government audit standards, which is, I know such standards we have to follow because you are a government and you're following the law, but that, and those are issued by the controller generally in the United States. It's just, I just, I just say that we have a bunch of rules we have to follow, and we're, we're indicating which ones we're, we're using whenever we're presenting audits. This audit is presented on a modified cash basis accounting. That means that we're not going to be showing fixed assets or liabilities on the face of the financials. That's completely consistent with virtually every school district in the state of Missouri. The only modification is to show any investment activity. So the most important paragraph, though, is our last paragraph, on the bottom of page three. I said it takes a bunch of, bunch of paragraphs to get to this important part. That says that in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. That's a, an unmodified opinion. In the past, you may have heard, you may have heard it called an unqualified opinion, or a clean opinion. That's the best opinion that you can receive, that's the opinion that the district wants to receive, that's consistent with prior years. So then after that, we're going to slip on over to some of the statements. We have a lot of statements because governments are required to present the same information in a bunch of different places. The one that's most like what you're used to seeing on a monthly basis is going to be on page 15, these are some of your statement activities. Well, that's going to be our governmental, that's, that's one I, I, sorry, I do like to point that one out first, because that is all your funds combined in one, that's one of our required statements to show. That shows if you took all your funds, general funds, or special references, all of them all together, that's what the activity is like. That's one of the part ones that few boards use on a, on a monthly basis, but we're required to present. The one that you're more likely to see is on 18, so I'll tap whatever, I want to do the page. On page 18, what you're going to see is a statement of receipts, dispersments, and changes in fund balances for your governmental funds. That's going to be your general fund, your special reference fund, or your teachers' fund, and your capital projects fund. A few of the highlights I did want to note on that. Total receipts for the year was about 13.6 million. That's an increase of about 547,000 over the prior year. Those increases came from about 200,000 from, was from local sources. Another 200,000 was from state sources. It's another 200,000 was from federal sources. There was about 50,000 increase in just weird miscellaneous other items. So anyway, that is, that is kind of, just like I said, to see. Some interesting notes about your pieces when you look at them, and this is fairly consistent with most districts in the state of Missouri setting. About 39% of your total receipts are from local sources. Nearly 60% of it is from state and federal sources. So when everybody's kind of looking at, you know, where, where the dollars are coming in at, that, those are the, the main areas of it. Dispersments for the year totaled 13.2 million, again, that's across all funds. And consistent with what I expected to see with my expectations, and consistent with what I see at other districts, the majority of that spending is, is in instruction. I mean, that's about 50, about 55% or higher is in structural and structural related activities. And that's, again, what, what we expect to see. And so we didn't have any concerns there. Operations, just keeping the place running, about 11%. Transportation's running about 6% this, this past year. We had to do some fairly, you know, we had to do some improvements with facilities, acquisitions, construction. Those were all things we have to see, everything was like there to be long on line, so that's always very good to see. Overall, for the year, you had, you had excess across all funds, excess balance. It exceeded dispersments by about 380,000. After transferring to cover those capital project needs, the general fund had an increase then of about 20,000, capital projects of about 370,000, and that's just because there's so many significant capital projects happening. So for the year ended, this district had 4.2 million in cash. Unfortunately, I wasn't, that's not all money that you can just go spend, oh, that looks really great until you realize that, that so much of that is restricted for these capital needs, that, of that, you really only have about 2.8 that's, that's, that's in your general fund to use. And even though that, more of that's even restricted to you, closer to 2.4, so that's even usable for, for services for the, for the school salaries, bus drivers, paper, all life cycle expenses. A few of the other things I do like to go ahead and note, so, starting on page 19, we saw, we start all of our footnotes. Those, for the most part, roller plate, but there are a few I do like to point out just for the board. One of those is going to be on page 22, which is our, which is your taxes. Assess valuation was 109,440,000 for, for last year, not the one that, that you have just approved this, this past August, but this has been for the prior. And that was an increase of about 4.6% or so over from the 2018 year. That's looking pretty consistent down here in this area. I just, I was at Gainesville a couple nights ago, that's about where their assessment was due. I saw it down there, so, pretty consistent across the board. The other thing I'd like to go ahead and point out is your levy, your levy is at 2.75, which has not changed from prior years, so I was like, wouldn't. We have both of them on there, I can make sure they're both on there. The collections are about 99%, so, thank you counties for collecting taxes, I guess, remitting them. That's the important part, not just the thinking of it, they send them on over. And that's usually where most school districts run, is, the collection rates usually run somewhere between, between 97 and 100%. Like I do like to go ahead and point that out, the only last things, I promise, I'm really going to wrap this up. Page 35 through 39, I won't go over those, but if, if you had the opportunity, I would encourage the board to flip through those. the board to flip through those. That's your, that's all those receipts and dispersments that we were discussing, but it's more detailed. I mean, it actually breaks out, you know, what was your current taxes, what was the linked with taxes, where's your property money? It breaks out in more detail what makes up those revenues, those receipts, and also those dispersments as well. And again, consistent with every school I go to, almost all the spending is salary-related. I mean, that's, it's teacher salaries, which where it should be, because that's where the important is. So again, nothing that jumped out there that was concerning, it was very consistent with our expectations, with past performance of the school districts and performance of other school districts. It's what we expect to see. The only other things I could probably point out is on page 43 is our audit of federal awards. So whenever we got to conduct an audit at a school district, we actually have three separate engagements that we are performing. We're doing what we've covered first, which is the audit of financial statements. Then the second, because this is a district that receives in excess of 750,000 in federal awards, we have a separate audit that is just for those federal awards. In this case, and then we have to apply, and then we have to submit this after we're all done here and we leave here, we'll be submitting this to the federal government so they can look at it and see what our findings were for it. It's one of the more, it's one of the more high-risk and frustrating areas of auditing anymore. And it's an area that fewer and fewer auditors really want to tackle. That's actually, that's one of the reasons that we picked up even this past year, just as an aside card fashion in kind of what government audit looks like. Even more odd is because fewer and fewer auditors even want to mess with engagements that include federal awards. The risk is too high. So after we, like after we finish this, we have to communicate on our work papers, and so that any federal agency can come in and look at those. Anyway, so that says it is one of the reasons. And I do like to point that out because it is kind of a, it's a really boring issue for everyone out there, but it's pretty present in our industry right now. Like I said, we do like to go ahead and point out that we did do that audit. We conducted it. Our opinion on that is going to be, again, another unmodified opinion, which is good, but that's certainly what you want. We did only note one issue. It's the same one that's noted in 95% of our entities that we audit. There was no federal awards finding, which is fantastic. The only finding that we did have at all was financial, financial reporting wise, and that is simply, that's segregation of duties. And we actually have that all listed out for you on page 50. The segregation of duties is a finding that, again, 95% of all of my entities have. It's just that, basically what it's saying is, is that you don't have 20 people in your finance department. And because of that, you're not, it's not possible to segregate all aspects of the accounting functions well enough to remove this. That does not mean that you're not mitigating that in a lot of ways. Again, I would, this is not one that you get the board need to worry about. It's been there since...
It's been there in every district that I've ever been in.
Yeah, I mean, this never went away. But sometimes other boards see that they get very concerned, and they're like, well, what can we do to get, you're not going to get rid of it. We've dealt with size, and then your accounting department starts to outline, you can maybe begin to address, you know, maybe then. But yeah, I have just a few of my schools have even managed to avoid that. And speaking of those federal awards, this district had about $2 million of federal awards that was spent during the fiscal year 2019. So that's a fair amount, and that's why the extra is. The third one that we do is an examination. And as I was saying, Missouri, for schedule, it's like a system for things like, is attendance being properly maintained? Is, are you doing your budgets? That type of thing. You had notices for giving me that. So anyway, that is all the highlights that I can. I know that the boards have this audit for a little while, so did you all have any questions? Is there anything that, I'm in contact with Monica throughout the year.
I'd like to, and I'd like to just touch on that just a brief bit. The audit is clean or unmodified because of the stuff that Mr. Dalton and I get to work with every day. He won't tell you, but he has a lot to do with federal awards. But between Mrs. Sterling, Mrs. Maddie, obviously Monica, and now our new addition, Kelsey, who's really picking up on the job quickly, they do such an excellent job. They do double-check each other. I mean, it's interesting. But we are able to call Jessica or one of her coworkers if we have questions. They don't charge us to do that, and we can make adjustments as we go. So that's, you know, just I think today, or yesterday, she called you with a question about, hey, okay, so where do I put this revenue? Or where do I put, just to be sure we have it in the right spot, so when they do come, there's no adjustment that has to take place. So we just, we appreciate our partnership, but our staff, they do an excellent job. And it makes our job way easier. I mean, we're in charge of it, but it's, without their work, we would not be in this place.
I can certainly agree with that. You have absolutely fantastic sound. You should give Monica a hard time about your known driving statements.
All right. Any questions?
No, anything? Well, it is always an offer I do make, and for some reason that you take this home and you read it some more and you think there is a real pressing for any issue. Let your superintendent know, I'm happy to address that if it does come up again.
We seem to approve the audit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the audit as presented. Okay, thanks. Motion, Dan, second. Any discussion? Alloons in favor?
I'm the same.
Okay. Carrie's a six O with one extension. Ms. Swartford.
I feel we should have gotten two.
Next.
I have the electronic copy, but not until my.
Next, we'll have the risk alternative school program review.
Ava High School has an alternative school at risk program that serves students in grades nine through 12, under the supervision of our alternative school director, Mr. Garrett Baird. The alternative school program received an overall rating of 4.8 out of 5. The major goal of the alternative school is to provide an opportunity for those students who are not successful in a traditional classroom for one reason or another, to give them extra support, and also to still allow them to get the opportunity to earn a high school diploma. In addition, the alternative school provides career exploration activities and also co-op working experience for students. And students, sometimes in the alternative schools, some of their concerns are usually that, hey, you know, we get bored being in front of these computers all the time. We want to, you know, we don't have enough exercise. So what we've done at Ava High School is kind of create a blended schedule, so the students are not in alternative school for a full day. They have that opportunity to come out of alternative school and take those classes that they really want to take, so that they still have that motivation to stay in high school. So they can take the vocational classes or those hands-on courses that they really enjoy taking and still earn a high school diploma. Last year, the alternative school served 161 students in grades nine through 12 through the regular alternative school program, our web-based alternative school program, the completion of credit program, Spanish courses, co-op program, and summer school. And those students earned a total of 407 credits last year, which is about 100 more credits earned than they earned in 2017 and 2018. Any questions about our alternative school program?
I've got one. I noticed our numbers are up a lot since 2015 to 2019. What do we do to difference that causes those numbers to be so much higher?
Part of our program is we've added our web-based program. So we have some students who are, you know, instead of dropping out of school, they're being able, and some of them, you know, they have like family issues, or they're needing to work so that they can support their families. And so those students are given the opportunity to, for a web-based program where they can kind of create their own hours on when they're going to work on a computerized program from home. And so we have several students who are taking advantage of that right now.
Also Spanish.
In Spanish.
We increased our number of Spanish students in our new school.
That dropped a little bit last year from the year before.
Thank you. Need to have a motion to approve the fiscal alternative school program review. Randy makes a motion at a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alloons in favor? Carrie's a seven up. Ms. Swartford.
I'll go through, just hit a few highlights of the special services program review. Our early childhood numbers last year, this is based off of the 18, 19 school year, were 25. 21 of those students were in classrooms with typically developing peers. Their best typically are students that are in the home environment, and their parents choose to bring them in for services. Our overall numbers were 192. That does not include our early childhood. We had 128 of those were in the classroom with their peers 80% of the time or more, which is really good. We're above the state average on that. So the more time they're with their peers, that's better for socialization in other areas when they're exposed to the same curriculum. Some other areas, we had, we met our graduation rate. We had zero dropouts for the year. And we had six that were reviewing transition plans, and that's what is, what's our goals after graduation? College, career, military. And we follow up with those as well. We were required to submit corrected action plans. Last year was our file review year. We received that information back this fall. We had four. We would like to have zero, but it is down from eight the previous cycle. So I'm working on those. That's just the state, we submitted 20 files to the state. They reviewed everything, every indicator that's on our standards and indicators, and they've done four that we were out of compliance on, and we're working on correcting those, and that's some professional development with her staff. A couple things, I've included the numbers there as of the date of the report. Some strengths, just, we do have, we sent Ms. McFarland to be CPI or crisis prevention intervention trained now. So she's going to come back and train our staff on some behavioral interventions, and so we are met with restraint training as well, as required. A recommendation that we had is a full-time early childhood special education program. Due to our large numbers, we are, we're right now at 25. That's what we ended the year with last year. So our numbers are, we're still, we're seeing, as I said, we have six referrals this week coming. So that's a growing area for us. Have any questions?
Dr. Hall, Ms. Swartford, went and viewed an early childhood social education center two weeks ago. So that's something we will discuss as we go forward.
Need a motion, vote to approve the special services program review.
I'll make that one.
Michael makes a motion. Mark, seconds. Any other discussion? Alloons in favor? Carrie's a seven up. Next is nursing contract.
So we've talked about this a couple different times. We have a child at the elementary school that requires a nurse with them full-time. This is the third contract we've asked you to approve. The parents have requested this change. This actually drops the price for the district. As you know, we bill back Medicaid for a portion of our cost, but due to the health concerns of this child, they do need a nurse with them full-time. So this is Phoenix Home Health. Mrs. Swartford and I met with a nurse that will be working with the child moving forward with this contract.
Sam was good with it.
Yeah, they chose it.
They chose it?
Yeah.
Motion and vote to approve the nursing contract as presented. Motion. Kenny makes a motion at a second.
I'll second.
Michael, seconds. Any discussion? Alloons in favor? Carrie's a seven up. Next is student advisory board position.
Dr. Nash is going to first.
So each year, we have a student advisory representative we vote, and allow the student body to vote on a student advisory representative. If we have a, if we have five or six different applicants, then we usually form a committee of teachers and counselor and a board member to kind of help go through those applications. This year, we had two students who were interested, so we went ahead and went on with the campaigning process. And they spent a week campaigning. They did, they wrote an essay telling how they would represent all of the students in the district, not just high school students. They did a brief speech over the intercom system, and then we allowed the Ava High School student body to vote. So our two candidates were Madison Wade, Madison couldn't make it tonight, but Madison was the daughter of Chris and Lindsay Wade. She's involved in student council, trend, FCA, FBLA, anchor club, FFA, National Honor Society, and volleyball. After graduation, she is hoping to attend Harding University in special in neonatology and pediatrics. Baylen Alexander is our other candidate. She's the daughter of Darren and Crystal Alexander. She is involved in student council, National Honor Society, FCA, FBLA, trend, FFA, volleyball, basketball, and track. She has volunteered at FFA blood drives and foxtrotters concession stand. And after graduation, she plans on attending college and majoring in agricultural business. So the Ava High School student body voted on the candidates, and I proudly announce that Baylen Alexander is going to serve as the next student advisor to the Ava Department of Education, and she'll begin her term in January. This is Baylen.
Congratulations. We'll be excited to have you give your speech to us in January.
Thank you. Next, we'll discuss the Dr. Schgrer.
So you will be given, I'm going to give you paper copies right after Thanksgiving of all of the essays. Obviously, they won't have names on them, they'll just have numbers. So you'll need to narrow those down to your three to four top choices. We'll make that selection at the December board meeting. Students were finalizing the essay this week, so I will get those to you. I'll just hand them to you electronically. That gets a little difficult if there's a lot to read, so I'll give those to you electronically right after Thanksgiving. Okay?
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Stillings.
Mr. Stillings requesting to address the Department of Education in writing.
Yes, I'd just like to ask, once I write the contract on my bus route, and then secondly, I'd ask to be able to operate the bus just under normal contract circumstances. That's all I've got.
So, so just want to be clear. So you're asking the district to purchase your right to contract?
Yes.
Which you have, and then you are willing to operate the bus?
Yes, on a year-to-year basis.
Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
But will own the bus? Will own the route?
Will own the route, yes. So the right to contract for route number one, which is the route he's talking about, is $35,446.87. That is in the right to contract. So we would be purchasing the right to contract back from Mr. Stillings. The district will have the rights to the route, and then we can choose to let him operate it under a regular contract, which, not in perpetuity, but in a year-to-year contract. Or we can choose to do something else with it at some point. I mean, that would be the district's decision.
So is he paid by $10.99 or W-2?
$10.99. He's a contractor. He's still operating as a contractor.
Okay.
So, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does now.
So, so we have, we have looked, we've talked about bus one in the past, but I wanted to bring you those numbers. So it's $35,446.87. That is something the district can afford to do.
And that is in his contract where we do it?
It is in his right to contract. That is the buyback for the route. That number was set in 2016 by the previous, with the district and the previous owner. Mr. Stillings purchased the route from the previous owner, and now he is requesting that the district purchase it back.
Okay, just because I need to understand for sure. So we're buying the route?
The right to contract is what we're buying.
We're buying the right to that route?
Yes.
Okay, but he's still going, if we vote?
If we choose to.
If we choose to, he will still operate it with his own bus?
Yes, with his own bus, his own expense. We will pay him a base rate plus mileage rate.
But we will own the route. He won't.
We will own the right to contract.
Steven, right to contract.
Probably, to see if I have a motion to purchase back the right to contract from Mr. Stillings for $35,446.87. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Michael makes a motion, have a second. Mark seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six four, those against? One against. Motion carries six to one. Next, we need to approve, the, the, the motion if we want to have Mr. Stillings drive.
He would operate route number one for the remainder of the nineteen-twenty school year, if that's what you choose to do.
I'll make a motion.
So.
Okay.
Let's have a motion in a second, and we can have a discussion.
Motion by Randy, have a second. Kenny seconds now, we're, that will discuss.
I just wanted to ask if he'd be open to a two-year contract, if we give you a two-year. I mean, I'm okay with that, I just don't want to tie the school or, you know, I don't want to tie anybody anything, you know, just on a year-to-year basis, or whatever it is for you guys. If that's what you want, that's fine, I mean, I'm fine with giving you a two-year. You're losing a lot of money on your route. Yeah. Was the way everything went. But anyway, it's, that's fine, but it's however you guys want to do that, if it's year-to-year, two-year, I'll honor the contract.
You can choose to injure, or you can choose to leave.
I choose to leave it.
Okay. So any other discussion?
This will be, so just to be clear, this is operated the same, the same as it has been, only just without the right to contract.
That's correct.
And your motion was for one year.
Yes.
To finish the survey for us here.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Carrie's a seven out.
Mr. Stillings, I will issue you a new contract. I'll get that, I'll get that to you, so you operate it tomorrow, but I'll get you a contract the next couple days.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes our agenda items for tonight's board meeting. Our next regular board meeting will be December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, this room at six thirty. Have a motion to adjourn. Randy makes a motion, have a second. Michael second, Phil in favor. Carrie's seven out. Thank you.
Well, I'm actually, I'm with the dance team on that, not that Ava is, but the music.
Yeah.
Oh, he's going.
Yeah.
So I have two retirements.
I'm ready to do it.
I'm all right.
I was going to think, I only had one.
I'm good, how are you? Okay, so see him. Did they bring your shirt off? Oh, okay. Well, that's okay, as long as you got some.